Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of May 20th, 2025. This meeting is being held in our hearing room on the second floor of 253 Broadway. It is also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. And we are beginning, we are resuming this afternoon session with item number four, Public Hearing Item Number Four. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Harala.
Okay, thank you. Public Hearing Item Number Four is LPC 25-06032, an application for an advisory report in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1164, Lot 32, Verdi Square Scenic Landmark. This is a triangular public park built in 1887, and the application is to modify curbing and construct a path.
Good afternoon. I'm Sybil Young with New York City Parks here today to present the installation of an accessible path within Verdi Square designated scenic landmark. As this is a scenic landmark, we are seeking an advisory report from LPC, and then we will also be submitting to the Public Design Commission for review. The path is a part of a larger project. The Friends of Verdi Square Group has asked Park to provide water service to Verdi Square so that they could tend to the dense planting there, and that necessitates the installation of an RPZ with an enclosure and two quick couplers. That work is being reviewed by LPC staff, so the focus of this presentation will really be on the accessible path. Here's our location on the Upper West Side between Amsterdam and Broadway, West 72nd and 73rd Street. Here you can see the 72nd Street 23 MTA subway station right here, making this a very heavily visited square. It was designated a landmark in 1975, and the designation report noted that the fact that so many residents are attracted to this park testifies to the serene and tranquil effect that this small open space provides. Today, it is still very heavily used, and why we are seeking to provide a more permanent solution for accessibility. A couple of historic maps, one from 1935 and 1936. Historically, the site has been the monument at the center here, and then surrounded by lawns, trees, and shrubs. Today, the square is filled with mature trees, the monument, and then we have this temporary accessible path shown here. A couple of historic images and contemporary photographs. The designation report noted that this is a necessary open space in this area of the city, that it enhances the visual effect of the large neo Florentine bank adjoining it, allowing the light to play on the rusticated facade. Nothing that we are proposing today will detract from those significant features of the landmark site. These are images of the two entrances to the park. As you can see on the right here, we have this temporary mat that provides accessibility, and then a temporary ramp to bring someone over the curb. And while this mat is better than nothing, it doesn't meet code, and when it rains, it becomes impassable by someone in a wheelchair. A couple images of the monument, which was installed in 1906. Aside from the monument, there's not really any historic fabric within the square. In 1998, the Commission issued an advisory report for a fence replacement here, and in that advisory report noted that except for the Statue of Verdi, the park retains no historic landscape elements. Here is an image of Amsterdam Avenue looking west, and then on the right here, you can see at the southern end of the triangle, it gets very narrow, and that's not an area that's really accessed by the public. Some images from within. On the right here, you see we have a very busy seating area. And then there is that subway terminal right here at 72nd with the park just to the left or east of the subway. Here on the right, you can see the dense planting and why the Friends of Verdi Square are requesting water service for the park. And looking east and southeast towards the park. This aerial shows the above and below grade constraints on the site. We are contending with MTA vaults, mature trees and tree roots, the monument, catch basins, and that's really what is driving the location of the water service and in part, the path. This schematic is mostly related to the water service, but showing how we're working around all those constraints, and you can roughly see where we're proposing to install the path here. But here is a more clear plan of the path, which will run from the entrance on the west of the park to the existing entrance on the north here. And this is a rendering of the proposal. When we first met with the community on this project, we had proposed an asphalt path for the site, but in hearing from them that they really wanted something more natural and permeable, we went back and looked at it, and we are now proposing a diamond grid with gravel infill, which we think is a little more in keeping with the garden nature of the park. And the two existing granite curves at the entrances will be cut and lowered to provide accessibility, and then the planted areas will be protected with a low wicket fence. A couple of more renderings of that. And these are just some examples of this material installed in other locations, so you can see what it actually looks like. A few images just to show this is not an uncommon condition. We often have paving and paths surrounding the monuments in our historic parks. And this is the final slide. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? All right, not seeing any questions, we'll move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Okay, John, come up to the mic and just make sure you turn the microphone on.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. Verdi Square is the smallest of our 12 scenic landmarks. It was designated for its presence as a quiet green foreground to the landmark Central Savings Bank across 73rd Street, making for an elegant and urbane ensemble. Many cycles of neglect and restoration have characterized Verdi Square. In the 1960s, its nickname Needle Park was brought to the world's attention by the 1971 movie Panic in Needle Park. In an act of courage and hope, the Commission designated the park in 1975, but by 2018, it had a new nickname, Vermin Square, due to the hundreds of rats living in its neglected and overgrown plantings. The founding of Friends of Verdi Square in 2019 finally provided the volunteer resources to clear out, replant, and to this day, maintain the scenic landmark. Today's application originally included a new asphalt path through the park. Public advocacy thankfully resulted in the change to a stabilized gravel path that will blend with the informal gravel-surfaced seating area at the north end. This is an appropriate part of the proposal. It's the other part of this proposal for a new water service that's the real problem. Even though it will have a significant visual impact on the scenic landmark and will cause long-term disruption to the landmark as well as the adjacent subway plaza and West Garden, it's being approved at staff level. We think a proposal of such import deserves a public airing. A large above-ground backflow preventer enclosure will be placed within the landmark adjacent to the seating area and near the Verdi Monument. DEP's Cross Connection Control Handbook tells us that such an installation may not be necessary or can be subject to an exemption for aesthetic reasons. We ask that the Commission request a determination from DEP based on the particulars of this site. Construction of the water line and hose bibs will result in long-term disruption to Verdi Square and the subway plaza and garden to the west. While the plaza and West Garden aren't under LPC jurisdiction, we believe it's our civic responsibility to call this out as an unnecessary waste of public funds. There are two existing hose bibs on the exterior of the new subway station building. These were intended to provide water for the plaza and plantings. One of them is just two feet from the West Garden. We ask that the Commission work with Parks to investigate the use of these hose bibs by the volunteer gardeners. This will save hundreds of thousands of dollars and avoid disruption and visual intrusiveness of backflow preventer and water line installation. We also note that the Park Department food service kiosk is located just 10 feet from the scenic landmark. It appears to have water service, and a quick and inexpensive modification could bring a hose bib to the back of that structure with easy access to Verdi Square. Please see the pictures in our written testimony, most especially the large picture that showed an image of what happened the last time in the early 2000s when the square was rebuilt. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Not seeing anyone else in the room to testify. I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which I will promote you to panelists. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Megan Fitzpatrick.
Hello, Commissioners. Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates the care and attention being given to this triangular oasis that is Verdi Square, located within a bustling intersection on the Upper West Side and one of the smallest scenic landmarks in the city. Our committee commends efforts to make our city parks more accessible and agrees that lowering the granite curb is appropriate. This item was previously laid over in February, and in our testimony, we had noted that, quote, "Aesthetically, the asphalt pathway stands out negatively in the landscape," end quote. We are glad to see the applicant agreed and has chosen to propose a more natural and permeable alternative. We are happy to support this proposal. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Lucy Levine.
HGC supports efforts to improve accessibility at Verdi Square. Hi, again. This is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HGC supports efforts to improve accessibility at Verdi Square, and we acknowledge and appreciate that Parks has offered a clearer and more detailed presentation for review than was available the last time that this was on the docket. However, this proposal still makes no provision for restoring the planting that will be extensively disrupted by this construction. And finally, we note that there are two existing hose bibs on the exterior of the new IRT control house. HGC questions whether those could be used for the purposes of providing water for the plaza and gardens rather than installing a new water source. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to testify, please use the raise hand function. Being done, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Seven recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've heard supportive testimony on the path, which is the aspect that's before us today. Is there anything that you would like to say before we move to our discussion?
Thank you for that testimony. We appreciate it all. You know, as noted, the RPC is not part of the public hearing, but we have looked at a lot of what was suggested there. The hose bibs are on a building that is not our property and would require the hoses to be run across this bustling intersection, and most likely would, most of the time, would not be done by Parks, but the volunteers working in the garden, so that's a little tricky. And also just to note that the RPZ, we are working with our landscape architects to develop a plan for evergreen plantings around the RPZ to hide it in the landscape, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, if there are no other questions, we'll move to our discussion. All right, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we're going to begin our discussion on this pathway that's being created with the gravel within a metal grid. Commissioner Luttrell, would you like to start this one?
Well, this is, uh, this is an important scenic landmark, and it needs to be accessible. So the applicant has, I think, very smartly decided to do it in a way that makes sense by just sort of lowering the curb, cutting and lowering the curb, and then also creating these little gravel-filled, you know, patches or containers so that we have like this very nat, it has this natural feeling to it. So I think that's the confines of what we're approving, and, you know.
Right. All right, thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I agree with everything that Commissioner Luttrell said. I love the diamond grid, I guess, gravel. It looks very rustic, and I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed.
There again.
Appropriate.
Does everybody else agree?
Yeah.
Any additional comments?
I would just say that I think the path is great, and I understand the need to get water to a closer source so they don't have people going in the street and so forth, but the RPC is kind of an intrusive element in the park, and normally it's required, but if it's not needed here, perhaps that could be waived if that's possible, and then you wouldn't have to have a box sitting in the middle of the park, so, you know, it would be worth exploring that, it would seem to me, but otherwise, I think it's great.
Okay. Thank you. And I do think this has been with us for a while, and I do think the Parks Department has done a lot of exploration around this, but I think the plan to plant the evergreens will help, and it does meet with our criteria for staff level, but they can continue to explore it. For now, we'll make a motion to approve it. The path.
In the matter of docket 25-06032, Verdi Square Scenic Landmark, a triangular park built in 1887, the application is to modify curbing and construct a path. I recommend that a favorable report be agreed, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or significantly affect any significant landscape feature, that the presence of the proposed path, including its placement and size, will be a modest alteration, which will provide barrier-free access to the park, that the gravel-filled plastic grid paving and metal wickets will be compatible with the landscaping of the site, that the cutting and lowering of sections of the curbing will maintain the historic material at the site and will provide barrier-free access to the park, and that the proposed work will not detract from the significant historic character of the scenic.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Mark, will you call the vote?
Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you, and we'll move to the next and final item.
That is Public Hearing Item Number Five, LPC 25-07704, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1413, Lot 24, 157 East 78th Street, the 157 East 78th Street House Individual Landmark. This is a vernacular rowhouse with Italianate-style influences built in 1861 and later altered. The application is to replace windows, alter the front facade, and construct a rear yard addition.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for joining us to review our proposal for our design at 157 East 78th Street. It's an individual landmark, and we are new to this process, but we are certainly grateful to Janelle and Emma, who have helped provide feedback as we navigate this process. We have met with Community Board Eight and the Friends of the Upper East Side in an effort to clarify and refine our proposal with their perspectives in mind. Yes, my name is Christopher Lee. I'm partner over at Model Practice. This is the lay of the land here. We'll start with an introduction and then follow that with some background information. We'll try to move quickly through that to spend more time on the proposed design. So here we are. This is the project in the photograph at the left. We are located at 157 East 78th Street. We are one of four townhomes that are individually landmarked on this row. We are between Lexington and Third Avenue. Here, on this next side, we have a preview of what is to come. The front facade is a fairly light touch, we think, where we will be proposing a new entrance infringement, some window and door replacements at the basement floor, and window replacements on the floors above to match the historical documents that we have reviewed. At the back, there is a more extensive proposal for horizontal enlargement that consists of a more contemporary architectural language. For context, we are an individual landmark. There are neighboring individual landmarks next to us. We are outside of the Upper East Side Historic District. And here, this is another map that kind of shows where we are relative to the Historic District. We're the westernmost site, and then there are three other individual landmarks to our east. An aerial view showing us where the property sits within the donut. To our west is a 16-story residential building, and bookending the row of townhomes, the historic townhomes, is a 10-story building to the east. And for more context, on the current condition of the facade, we have the rear facade view on the left, where you see the two lowest floors have pushed back into the rear yard, but the upper two most floors are consistent with the original footprint of the original townhome. So the topmost floor in the left image will have been part of the vertical enlargement that included the mansard roof that you can see in the front facade image to the right. And for some historic background, we've done some due diligence to kind of look at the historic fire insurance maps and studied the evolution over time. You can see in 1911, the original row of 11 townhomes that were built pretty much at the same time, and then by 1923, the, well, actually, 1916, the townhomes located at 163 and 165 were combined into a single townhome. And then by 1956, we see the sort of breakup of the row of 11 houses, and ultimately, what we have now are four individual landmark townhomes standing. And some photo documentation to show us some historical context. This is 165 East 78th, where there used to, there would have been the continuing row of townhomes extending to the east, but that building, those buildings were demolished to make way for the 10-story co-op building. You'll note the four-over-four double-hung windows. That is something we are referencing in the replacements in our proposed facade. And the row of four townhomes that are included here, you'll note the addition of the mansard roof on our project site. The penthouse addition at 163 and 165 has not yet been added, but the uppermost windows on the right-hand side image have been enlarged to have the French in-swing casements. 1939, you can start to see the sort of the evolution of the sort of sense of entry within these townhomes in our project. You can see the pedimented entrance infringement, whereas on two doors down, there is a sort of different articulation of entrance. More views that kind of show that articulation of entrance to give the facade some level of hierarchy and to establish sort of wayfinding through architecture. Correspondingly, at 161, there's a different expression of entrance infringement, but nonetheless, trying to establish entrance with the absence of what would have been a historic stoop. And quickly, the neighborhood study, this is just to illustrate the context of the block. The individual landmark buildings identified here are sandwiched between two taller buildings and set back from that street wall. And the block plan showing you the donut and the relative distances of the horizontal enlargements that have accreted over time. And so this is the axon view of the rear portions of the individual landmark buildings. It not only shows you the growth over time of vertical enlargements, but the push backwards into the rear yards over the history of the buildings. The bottom rightmost image would show you the sort of build-out if 163 and what's 165 continues along its path of building the approved, their approved design, and also if we at 157 are also allowed to push back, kind of create a more consistent vertical urban wall at the rear facade. Views of the existing rear facades taken from a neighboring property, 163, 165, which is that combined townhouse, townhome is currently set back from 161 and 169. And if you look at the rightmost image, you can see 157 set back roughly nine feet from its neighbor at 159. And views of the approved application for 163, 165, this again is the sort of easternmost townhome in the row of existing townhomes, where they are pushing back all four floors into the rear yard, and in fact, going to the maximum extent of the required setback lines. And so this brings us to the proposed design, where we start with the existing floor plans to illustrate the way that the lower floors of the building at the left of the slide push further back into the rear yard, whereas the top two floors here show the facade line being consistent with the original building footprint. So in our proposed floor plans, two primary things we want to call out, there's the modification to the entrance with an entrance infringement and some articulation and projection from the original facade. Included in that is a double-height expression right behind, a double-height volume right behind that entrance door to provide ample light and a grander sense of entry. At the rear of the building, all the floors push back to the same vertical plane. There is a double-height space proposed at the dining room that is adjacent to the rear yard and garden and is spanning from the basement floor to the underside of the second floor. So an enlarged view of the entrance infringement, existing plan on the left and proposed on the right. The existing condition has two entrances, a service entrance here and a primary entrance here, and the middle bay window is divided by an interior partition. What we're seeking to do is bring back more of the historic language of the original building and replace these two windows with double-hung windows and establish a little more hierarchy within the facade by articulating the entrance infringement at this location here. Exterior elevation of the front facade showing you the existing at the left and proposed at the right. It should be noted that we're mostly focusing our attention here at the front entrance, where we are proposing to enlarge the opening in the sense that we're widening it to align with the existing opening above, and we're articulating the infringement with brick, stone, and brownstone to match the existing facade. A diagrammatic kind of explanation of the history. State historic records indicate that there were stoops on these townhomes on this continuous row, so they started with a two-story building over an exposed basement in 1860, and at some time around 1916, the mansard roof would have been added, and then the stoops removed at a time around 1930, where the pedimented entrance that we saw in the historic records was constructed sometime between where the pedimented entrance that we saw in the historic records was constructed sometime between there and today. The, that infringement was removed and a service entrance added in this diagram here. And today, we want to sort of restore that hierarchy that is in clarity of the facade by defining the entrance and framing it and restoring the window where the current service entrance is now located. So here we have a north-south building section to show you the existing condition, where the lower floors extend further back into the rear yard. It's noted that this floor extends further back than our neighbor, which stops here at this line here. And then the proposed condition, where at the entrance, we have the infringement projecting one foot from the existing facade, and then you enter into the interior space, which has a double-height volume. Similarly, at the rear yard, you have the dining room that is also a double-height space. And all the floors above come to the same vertical plane in the forms of the horizontal enlargements. Here we have enlarged entry elevations, existing on the left again, proposed on the right, widening the existing entry door so that it aligns with the opening above and articulating within an infringement a projection of the materials that are already on the facade. So down here, a projection of the bluestone band that is existing in the building. And then above, brick columnar elements to provide the sort of vertical elements and a brownstone or simulated brownstone projection that creates a sort of entablature or header over the entrance door. You can see here, there is a proposed security gate that sits in front of a six-panelled wood door. An enlarged section to kind of show you the relationship of that projection to the facade and to the window above, which would be made to match the existing, but be fixed and no longer operable because of the fact that we have a double-height space behind the facade. And a view of that as a whole rendered here to illustrate the concept. Window details to emphasize that we are seeking to match the existing profiles. So the existing profiles are shown on the left of the page and the proposed on the right. Critical difference being that we are replacing glass and windows so that they are more contemporary in terms of their performance. So we have the insulated glass unit and sort of thicker window molding profiles to accommodate that change in glass type. There we have an enlarged visualization of that entrance infringement. Starting from the left, we have a sort of an illustration of how that brick curvature that flanks left and right of the infringement would be employed using standard bricks in sort of half-module sizes. What you can also see is the continuity of the stone material at the base, continuity of the brick at the vertical columnar elements, and continuity of the brownstone belt in terms of its materiality. At right, just our examples of the curved brick kind of being employed in built structures. The bottom right image shows a project of ours that we did at a rear yard addition for a brownstone in Park Slope. This is the same slide. I'm just toggling back and forth. It's just here to sort of provide more clarity. We're just removing the area way fence to kind of show what would be sitting behind. That brings us to the rear facade. Existing facade is on the left with some dimensions to kind of give you a relative sense of the existing size of the openings. And then the more contemporary expression of the rear facade as we are currently proposing, it hearkens back to the three-bay grid, which is part of the design language on the front of the building that we're taking to the back half of the building. We're relying on the same brick material that's used in the front of the building for additional consistency. And we're introducing this language of changing sizes of openings, where the openings at the bottom part of the building are widest and tallest, and the openings at the top of the building are sort of narrowest and shortest. And that follows this sort of idea that the most public spaces and the most more transparent sort of program exists at the lower floors of the building and the most intimate and private spaces that require more sort of intimacy are at the top of the building. And so this diagram shows you that change in size with the lowest floors at the left and the upper floors at the right. Two upper floors have in-swing French casements that are similar to the front facade in referencing that sort of operation. And there's a Julia balcony that is articulated with a perforated metal guardrail. A section to kind of illustrate the way that the articulation and size changes as you move from the bottom half of the building to the top half of the building, where there is less or no corbeling, in fact, at the lowest window. But as you ascend the building, corbels return, sort of shrink the size of the opening to create that gradient in opening size. This plan detail is illustrating the same so that same design concept is applied not only in section, but also in plan. At the lowest part of the building, you're around four foot two inches wide. At the top of the building, you're about three foot two inches wide. And so some visualization of that rear facade condition and this idea that the more collective spaces are more transparent and open and connected to the outdoors and the more intimate spaces are shielded and smaller as you get to the top of the building. Images to the right are there for reference for what the existing condition is. And then the bottom right sort of shows you a built condition to show you how that corbel texture would add a lot of character to the facade. And finally, a composite view, existing at the left and proposed at the right, showing you how the horizontal enlargement more or less brings the proposed condition in plane with its adjacent neighbors. But the facade expression is nonetheless contemporary.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So I have a few. Currently, the sills and headers on the front facade are painted white and match the adjacent buildings. Is your drawing correct that you're planning to expose the stone underneath?
Correct. Historic records indicate that the lintels are brownstone. And so we would have to explore to make sure that that is the case. But we would want to uncover that brownstone and let that show.
Then they have been painted white a long time.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I know this may seem self-evident. Why do you need the security gate? There isn't one now. And I presume that door has been there for many years.
There isn't one now. This is at request of the client. They are a growing family and she has some concerns over security and would like the extra layer of security.
Thank you.
All right. And just to follow up on that question, do you have, I mean, I know these are individuals. It's not a historic district. But are there other fences within the group or even further beyond on the streetscape?
There are other fences within the group, but for instance, I may be able to see if there's an image with the neighbor. The neighbor just immediately to our east also has a fence, but it is lower than ours. We are intending to keep the existing fence in place.
Commissioner Chapin.
I sort of had this same question, which was basically, it seems like a lot of layers of fencing and window guards and so on, which seemed, I mean, some of the other buildings do not have the same height of fence or as many layers, so to speak. So I thought maybe there was a special concern, as we sometimes see in some neighborhoods. But the answer is that that's what the client wants, but you don't have a specific knowledge of particular problems. It's more that.
With regard to the security gate in particular? I mean, the two doors down, there is actually a security gate in front of the existing entry door. That's actually something that I thought that would make sense for them. In terms of the fences in front of the areaways, the height of ours is similar to the height of the fence at 163 and 165. The fences of the landmark buildings in between are slightly lower.
Thanks. No, I just want to make sure we're clear. You were saying that you're keeping the existing fence.
Right.
So the fence that is there now, well, it's not in these photos, right?
There we go.
Okay. So is it before us if they're keeping it?
It's the areaway fence gate is existing to remain. I think in this case, it's the second ironwork in front of the door.
Got it.
That's being discussed.
Okay, can you just actually go to the ironwork in front of the door so we can understand that a little bit?
Going to the enlarged views here, yes.
Okay.
There is also, it's oblique in this view, but there's a gate at the sidewalk level, which is, you know, about three steps up from the areaway below. Yeah, right, correct. So the hinge in this view is on the right-hand side of the view and it swings to be parallel with the sidewalk.
Okay. So the gate in front of the door is what's before us.
Yeah, and it's really all of that door and its surround.
Door and the surround, yes.
Re-envisioning of that.
Got it. Okay, I just want to make sure we were all talking about the same ironwork. Any other questions? Okay, let's move to public testimony. John Graham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society supports the parts of this proposal that are restorative. At the front facade, these include the removal of the existing service door on the left side of the facade, replacing it with a window matching the one in the center bay, and the installation of a new stone-water table and masonry infill. We also support the removal of the one-over-one sash on the third-floor dormers and their replacement with two-over-two sash matching the historic configuration. However, we couldn't find information on the material or dimensions of the new window proposed for the ground floor or the three at the top floor. There are also no notes on finish or material for any of the replacement windows. All the French doors, casements, and double-hung sash should be painted wood. The dimensions of all of them should be provided. The French doors at the parlor floor should retain their historic fixed transoms. We also support the replacement of the six-panel wood door at the main entrance, as well as the modifications to the masonry surround. This entrance has been altered before, and the proposed changes respect the character of the basement entrances seen on this row. However, there are no dimensions or finish notes for the existing or proposed doors. Dimensions should be provided. The new door should match the existing door. Either a painted or stained finish is acceptable, but it should be stated. We find the iron gate at the main entrance inappropriate to a house that already has a tall areaway fence and gate. If a gate is acceptable here at all, it should not be simplistic and modern. It does not relate at all to this historic facade. There's beautifully detailed historic ironwork in adjacent districts that could serve as the inspiration here. However, interior security behind the wood door would be a much better solution. But our strongest objections concern the destruction of the upper two floors of the rear facade. This destruction of historic material wouldn't be acceptable on a simple row house in an historic district. This building is an individual landmark. It shouldn't be acceptable here and must be denied. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And I'll note that there are no other speakers in the hearing room, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to take us through any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Zainab Turan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Landmark examples of vernacular architecture are scarce on the Upper East Side. Therefore, Friends' Preservation Committee commends the preservation of this admirable mid-19th century residential brick architecture and the character it brings to the street and the neighborhood. While we largely support the design of the front facade and understand the new owner's security concerns, we believe alternative design and technology solutions can address the needs without the installation of a security gate, which would detract from the entryway's prominence. Furthermore, Friends can support the proposed rear facade with its sensible, minimal design and the well-considered sequence, sizing, and rhythm of window openings across floors. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Lucy Levine.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HCC finds the proposed rear yard addition to be inappropriate. We find the proposed bulk, particularly at the second and third floors, to be oversized. We also believe the upper two floors of the rear wall, which appear to be original and in decent condition, should be retained. Further, we find the proposed steel gate on the front door to be overly simple for this building and for its function. We would love to see decorative ironwork be somewhat more detailed. Additionally, HCC finds the proposed rear yard addition to be inappropriate due to its fenestration amassing. On the front facade, we disagree with the removal of the ironwork and its replacement with a new metal guard. Finally, if a security gate is absolutely necessary, we recommend it be placed on the interior instead. Thank you.
All right, there are no more online attendees, and Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends denial.
Okay. So would you like to respond to the comments we've heard? I think it's largely around the security gate at the door and the rear yard addition.
I mean, I think that the security gate may be something that we can revisit with the owner just to see if there would be alternative solutions. I'm also interested in what technology solutions might afford that sense of security for the owner. So that's something we can bring back. At the rear facade, we are doing a horizontal enlargement, much like all of our neighbors to the east. So volumetrically, we're not doing anything differently, but we will be the first to admit that the expression of the architecture and the aesthetic style is much more contemporary. But it is in keeping with the time. So the original row of townhomes was built at the same time. They have a very similar architecture, if not the same architectural expression. But at the rear, there is evidence that this, these buildings have evolved over time. And architecture is not static, and we have to acknowledge where we are in time and what available construction techniques and technologies are available while we're doing this project now. So that is certainly part of the thinking and why our facade is sort of more contemporary.
I have another question. Yeah, Commissioner Goldblum.
This is for Corey. Can you talk a little bit about the history of?
Yeah, I mean, I'm most familiar with the pair that was historically combined on the other side of this group, which the commission reviewed and made an approval on within the last couple of years, maybe even more recent than that. You can see it there on the photo on the left. That pair of facades, the plane of the upper floors, could you, would you mind going back? Whoever's controlling the slides to the photographs? Yes, on the left, 163 and 165. So what you see on the existing condition photo is the top floor that was added to those, to that pair, which was combined historically, actually came all the way out to the plane of the original rear facade. So the original top floor is actually the second from the top in that photo there. So the original top floor is actually the second from the top in that photo there.
Right. So that, when we approved that, you approved refacing that or extending it out?
Extending it outward to align with the lower addition at the building next door, which also aligns then to the house to the right of that. So so that approval did require that the uppermost height of the new rear facade be consistent with the two neighbors to the right. Through through the commissioner review, that was that was brought back down, but there was, it was essentially a full height rear addition added to the back. And so similarly, this this applicant, I think you you could say is is seeking the same, the same thing.
All the, if the arguments about that rather.
I think I think part of the, what factored in was that that top floor, you know, that the original form of the of the row house had already been affected by the the new top floor coming out and sitting on top of it. And I think there was some evidence that maybe more of that facade had been reconstructed than just the top floor of what existed, but I'm not entirely sure about that. But I think the other factor was the 161, you know, next door and 159 having evolved in in similar ways as well. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Corey, that wasn't removing what we think is existing, original. It was just adding on top of it?
No, I mean, again, look, referring to the photo on the left, it may be that the sort of mid-level floors were the original rear facades. I think there may have been some evidence that there was some significant repairs done there as well, but that top floor, you know, again, whenever the the penthouse level on that pair was put in, it was put directly on top of the rear facade. So not everything there was the original house, and that was factored in.
Right, so the lower floors were original, the top floor was not original, which is actually the case with the building we're looking at today, because that mansard addition went all the way to the rear wall, so it sits on top of the former rear wall. So the height, the top floor of the rear facade of 157 is not the original top floor. I think that the architect said it was about 1916. And then similarly, 159 and 161 evolved over time, and they got a floor taller and full height additions. Okay. And, you know, I think, well, let's, let's, if there are no other questions, let's close the hearing and move to our discussion. Okay, so Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. The hearing is closed. And so these individual landmarks, five, which two were then were combined into one earlier on, are, were once part of a much larger row. They, in the mid, early 20th century, were the only ones that remained. And it was fairly common practice for the commission to designate small rows as rows of individual landmarks, because they weren't big enough to be a historic district. So they're, because they were one side of the street and fewer buildings, they didn't have the required sense of place. And so the commission often, if they felt it was important enough, would designate them as individual landmarks, and they're sort of repetitive buildings that are individual landmarks. And so these buildings are repetitive. This one is different in that it had the mansard roof added over time, and they all have had evolution at the rear, including this building, because the mansard roof sits on what was the former top of the rear wall. And the other buildings all had additional floors added and full height rear yard additions, including the one that was approved by this commission at the pair at the other end of the row. So this application is to do a similar, similar volume, but with a more contemporary expression. And the proposal at the front also includes the eliminating the the service door, creating the two windows, and doing a new door surround at the basement level with a new door and security gate. So Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
Could I just add one thing to the list on the front facade? And this was maybe not entirely clear, but at the parlor floor, everything about the window replacements meets the staff level rules. Wood windows, details that match historic, you know, the finish and configuration, except for the operation change, there's a a request being made to no longer have the transom operate separately from the the windows casement below and to make that full height. So it looks exactly the same, but it's a sort of a full height casement on the two on the left and then a fixed window on the one on the right that, you know, presumably had a door when there was a stoop. So it's just a kind of an operation change only at those parlor floor windows as well.
Take it away.
Yep, take it away.
Okay. Well, I guess we've just learned something that maybe every individual landmark is not the same as every other individual landmark. Some are really, in a way, kind of a mini historic district, but was not deemed to be sense of place enough to do that. So I'm I'm using that a little bit in my thinking here, because I think these, these townhouses are interesting, but hardly at the same level of some of our individual landmarks, at least around the city. I think everything in the front is, on the street level, is is okay with me, except for the the interior, I mean, the the gate at the front door itself, I would eliminate that. I find everything else to be appropriate. The entrance is slightly enlarged, slightly aggrandized, but it was aggrandized much more earlier in its life. I think this is a very modest and a simple proposal. So turning to the back is the heart of the issue, I think. And when I first saw this, I thought, well, completely inappropriate. But the more I got into it and thought about it, I'm not so sure now, or I'm beginning to lean that it is appropriate, let's just say that way. Partly because of the streetscape, the the rear scape, let's call it, the donut scape, the the adjoining houses to which this house is, was originally identical, have all increased their amassing in the way that this proposal seeks to do. Again, the, some of what we view, we might view as original is was not original, as we heard, but added in 1916 or so. The other part of this, for me, as a designer, I'm, I was pretty persuaded that this is a very interesting and sophisticated design. I appreciated the the whole presentation. Actually, it was a very cogent and thorough and elegant presentation, I thought. And I think the way the progression from bottom to top. Will this be noticed? Well, not anybody from the public thoroughfare, but if you're lucky enough to be invited to a dinner party outside in one of the rear yards during the summer months, you might, you might be able to see this and appreciate it. But that doesn't change the fact that it's still, I think, to me, a very elegant, this corbeling idea is a very kind of elegant solution. And it helped me decide where I'm coming out now, a lot by seeing the rendering, that the brick is very similar in color. At first, I thought this was very dark or different, but I think if I understand the the idea that the the brick that's being used is very similar to the brick in the in the adjoining houses. So I'm finding it appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Well, I'm gonna kind of go in a different direction here. Looking at the other houses on this block, I feel like this one, the putting a gate in front of the door has a really a fortress-like appearance to me. I mean, there is maybe one other house that I noticed that had as much, you know, layers of ironwork, because many of the other premises have a shorter fence in the front, or they don't have things on the windows and the doors, but they, you know, they have a substantial fence, but nothing in back of that. And without sort of a compelling reason that this is a special security issue, I feel like it's it's really kind of covering up the house in a way that, to me, is inappropriate. So I would not like to see the door ironwork, and that would kind of eliminate the need to do this substantial reconfiguring of the door, which I think is a little bit overdone and and should be, if if it happens, it should, there should be less, you know, build out, because that's, is not similar to what's going on in other houses of this of this type. In the rear, I feel because this is, this was a design group, this was a group originally of of small houses, where it designated, and you're explaining it wasn't, they might not have entirely risen to the level of an individual landmark. I've had situations where I propose things for individual landmarks, and I've been told, no, there's nothing near it, so forget it, you can't do it. We can't do it regardless of its individual, because it doesn't have quite enough individual merit. So I think these houses had quite a bit of merit to manage to be saved as a group. And I feel like there's a sense to me, when you look at the back, the current rears, that they have, they have a different, they have a kind of quality that I find attractive. And I feel like we're we're losing that with a total, I don't have any objection to a much more fenestration, and I don't have, I don't think we have to necessarily have both top floors be, you know, similar or something. But I feel like if we could have a little bit more sense of either period about the entire back facade, even though Commissioner Bland says, you know, the design is perfectly fine as a new design, I think it's it's excellent. But I think in this context, I would like to see it relate more to the other buildings in the row, because, you know, it's a, it's an unusually nice little row in the back that hasn't really, to me, lost a certain quality that I that I find desirable. So that's where I'm at.
All right, so I think your, the architectural expression you're seeking is something that has more of the domestic scale to it than the others have. But are you comfortable with the volume matching the volume on the other houses?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so about the design?
I think that's completely appropriate. It's just I'm looking for an aesthetic.
Got it, okay.
Commissioners, if I can just, I I know this is a little complicated because these are, but these are individual landmarks, so I think it's really appropriate to try to focus our attention on what we think is appropriate for this particular building. We can obviously reference what's happened to these other ones, but I think we should try to really emphasize that that our decision making is really based on the impact on the architectural features of this building.
Commissioner Letty.
You know, I've been in my mind as we've been going along, and I've been listening to the presentation also to my fellow commissioners and thinking about this. On the front, I you know, I am basically fine with everything that's going on with the windows, the change in operation of these new full height windows, the removing of the service door and replacing it for, you know, installing a window that was once on the front facade, that works as well. I I do have a problem with this, with the, with the gate in front of the door. And I do feel that there are other ways that the security can be, concerns can be addressed on the front. On the rear, I I appreciate that these are, you know, the, this is part of a grouping. But first thing that I want to note, which has been said, is that there has been change at the top of this building. And there has, there have been changes at the top of the adjacent individual landmarks. So that leads me to feel that I do not have a problem with the extending the width of the top two floors. And then I have to say that, even though there is a nice relationship between these buildings, I also would have to agree with Fred that I think this is a very nice cohesive design, that using materials that to, that do relate to the original facade and also to the, to the buildings next to it. And I just think it hangs together in a very, in a lovely way, and it's not visible. So I'm okay with it.
Right. Commissioner Master.
I agree with Commissioner Chapin. On the front facade, I think everything is fine, although I think they should remove the, I guess it's called, the security gates in front of the door. On the rear facade, I understand this is an individual landmark, and I understand that it's not visible, the rear facade. However, I think that the amount of change here is pretty significant. The volume, I think, is fine. However, I'd feel more comfortable if they kept a more traditional fenestration on the upper two floors.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson.
So originally, originally, this was part of a row. At some point, one of them became a landmark. More meaning than at the higher standard that we have to live up to. So for me, the front facade at least had to be one of those two buildings. I'd be a landmark. Fence and the gate would be rethought. The scale of it is too big. Doesn't fit the facade. The facade, you know, rule is that before. God is very handsome. I think the rule part, it's a landmark building. It can just be changed, it just becomes another.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Interesting discussion at the end of the day of of what would seem to be a garden variety kind of application. So in terms of the front, I think that the, I agree with pretty much everybody here. Get rid of the gate in front of the door. Everything else is fine. I I personally thought that the way that they modified the main entrance was quite precedent for others, as long as the brick matches well. And but if the brick doesn't match, it'll be a real. In terms of the back, discussion has revolved around the entirety of our particular law. Our law, on or off, you know, we don't have gradations. Markets a landmark and rationale behind that landmark are not granted recognition necessarily. Relation is written. We, however, granted the leeway to interpret it as we wish, while the building isn't Grand Central Station or the Empire State Building, it's landmark. And so that places a certain level of focus, attention, care that we don't necessarily grant to building that could look exactly like this, of the same exact age, that was protected by virtue of its being in. Irony here is, is that the reason that this particular house is given that extra level of concern is because there wasn't enough district to be a district. of concern is because there wasn't enough district to be a district. So a deficiency in the neighborhood has made, hey, this, how to get more protection than necessarily the architecture might merit in other situations. Well, you can say whether that's a good, good policy or a bad policy, but it's the policy. And I certainly look at it in a way similar to Everardo, that, you know, that, yes, we should be looking at this, not as if it were in a district, but as if it, you know, it's in isolation. These buildings are designated, for better for worse, in isolation as individuals, so their contextual relationships are not necessarily as important or as impactful as they might be elsewhere. Point one. Point two, the whole idea of keeping the top floor was to preserve the historic volume of the building. Now, the phrase historic volume of the building is not defined in the dictionary, it's something that we ourselves determine, and I would argue that 1916, 1914 is well within the period that we would consider protectable. And the mansard roof, there are, there are buildings of this vintage all over the city that have had fourth floors added, fifth floors added, that we protect all the time because we believe that the age and vintage and quality of the addition is significant in and of itself. So I think that the volume should not be extended to the top floor, because I believe that the top floor, even though it's not original to the house, it's old enough and integrated enough and representative enough of the way the district has developed that it merits protection, not from a contextual perspective, not because other neighbors did or didn't, because in this individual building, we should be maintaining volumetric expression of the historic artifact.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Well, interesting discussion, and I'm glad I'm going near the end, and although I am going to raise something that no one else has raised. So removal of the service door is fine, window changes in the front are fine. The security gate is not good. I think if they're concerned about security, they could either put a gate inside the door or put in a fancy alarm system that would protect them. I'm not a fan of the build-out, but I think others are accepting, and I think they needed the build-out for the gate, but I could go either way on that. I would feel that the headers and sills should remain white. I realize no one else has raised that, and it always could be changed later, so not a big issue. And I agree with Commissioner Goldblum and I think Commissioner Jefferson, that 1916 is historic, and this is always an issue of when do you go back to? So I would like to see the top floor facade retained.
Okay. Commissioner Chen.
I share the sentiment that it's good to go last. And having heard all the diverse opinion, I think that the majority is correct. I think that the front facade and the front treatment is correct, except for the gate. I do not know what the alternative treatment is, so I leave that to the staff and the applicant to work that out. I think the back is really interesting. I think in this case, Fred is not wrong in the sense that it is a modern building and is in the back and it goes straight up, but Michael made a very good point, which is that, you know, we are making an exception here in the sense, why, right? And so I was trying to figure out, you have a building, and what does it do by, you know, having the top two floors being a different, but I think given that we historically have treated it that way, and I also agree with the comment that 1916 is within the defined period that we were interested in preserving, so I would go along with the majority.
All right. I think, I think we're split 50/50 on the volume, so I think what, we're gonna take no, we're gonna take no action today. I think everybody agrees that the gate is not appropriate at the front door, so would ask you to reconsider how you deal with security, but I think the majority of Commissioners are comfortable with most of the changes on the front, the removal of the service door, the changes to the window configuration, and I think even many of the Commissioners were comfortable with the proposed door surround. And, and then on the back, I, you know, we have, we're sort of split on the volume, but even those who support the volume, I think, think that re-studying the fenestration and pattern, architectural expression at the upper floors to retain more of a domestic scale that would have been found in this house would be more appropriate. So we'll take no action, we'll have you continue to work with Janelle and Emma and think through a revised proposal that you can bring back to us as soon as you're ready. All right? Thank you very much, and that concludes our public hearing today, and we do not have one the next two Tuesdays, so we'll see everybody on June 10th. Thank you.